Good evening. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Vice President, Martha Tashnik?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,996th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, July 15th. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Donavich?
Here.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toye?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
President McCullough?
Here. And we show all members of council here today. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of City Council held on June 17, 2024. Council?
Move to approve.
Approval from Jolly?
Support.
Support from Buzinski. Any comments from the audience on the minutes from June 17? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye, and the minutes are approved. We are now going to move on to audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any audience communication? If we do, please make your way to the podium, and you have three minutes. Please list your name and address for the record.
Marlene Katavious, 15100 Merriman Road. My parents moved to my current home in Livonia between 1951, 1952. My mom worked for various departments in the city of Livonia, including the Treasurer's Office until she died. Livonia is the only place I have lived in since we moved here, and I have watched it grow into the city it is now. I have seen mayors come and go, although I haven't personally known most of them. But I started studying the history of our city late last year and noticed that Jack Kirksey, one of the longest-serving mayors, 16 years, and then further reading, reminded me he had also been a Livonia public school teacher in principle, a state congressman, and an assistant Wayne County Assistant. I don't know Mr. Kirksey at all, but my husband golfed with him a few times. City was a nice guy, so I'll go with that. Anyway, I have been attending council meetings, as some of you have seen, for a couple of years, just to see how things are done. And I also read a little of the city charter, very little. Anyway, Section 12.18.010 says, "The name of public building shall be by authority of the City Council by a resolution." So I am issuing a challenge to the City Council members to rename our current and future City Hall, the Jack E. Kirksey Livonia City Hall, in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name and record, name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Pierre Baldwin, and I'm here on Amero and Hubbard Road, the bicycle path that they did last year. And our house, it has a ditch. And can I go back a little bit on the history? I was my brother guardian, that was my mom and dad's house, I was my brother guardian. And I went, I was going to cover the ditch, so it would have been easier to have the grass cut. At the time, the city engineer was very kind, and he said, "You know what? We're going to do the path for the bicycle. You may not need to cover. We're going to cover when we do it." So a few years went by, and finally, last year, they did it. And they made the ditch much deeper. And my son was in Europe, so I, since I've been part of it, and I have a history of this, I called, and I said, "The ditch is bigger," you know? And I talked to Mr. Nessar, and Mr. Nessar said to me, "I know there is a situation here. Let's wait until next year, when I do the other side, I will take care of the ditch." So I did not have nothing in writing, because I'm almost 37 years old, so my world count. I expected somebody would to come. My son is in Europe again, so I was seeing all the work, and they were finishing across. And so I did call Mr. Nessar. And he was very kind. He remembered who I was. He remembered the house. But I think he said he forgot that he promised me. So I called his boss. Well, he was not so kind, and he called me a liar. You know, I don't lie. I'm a nurse. I worked until 35 years of age. I'm not a liar. So that was a promise. So then I called the city engineer. Anyhow, I went there, and was a gentleman named Louis, and he was very kind, and he was going to talk to the engineer in charge. And apparently, he was upset. And anyhow, he never called me back. So what happened? I called the mayor's office.
Ma'am, so, ma'am, that's, so our audience communication is three minutes.
Okay.
No, no, but what I'd like you to do, there's a card right up there on the podium. Is there a card right there on top of the podium? That's a communication card by the microphone? I want you to, there should be a business card. If not, we're going to get you one.
Yes.
Oh, yes. So I want you to send us a note, if you can, or even call tomorrow, and Sarah, who's our office manager?
I've been trying to call, sir. I haven't had no luck.
I want you to call, so you're going to reach out to Sarah tomorrow, and we're going to get you some answers. Sarah's right here from our council office, and that number will get you right to her.
Okay.
Would that be okay? And we'll make sure we get some answers for you.
Please.
And I appreciate you coming out and hanging out with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience communication for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to council communications. Councilwoman Buzinski?
Yes. Just to start things, I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Baldwin, we did speak today, and I did share the information with the administration. So your concerns are noted and are being addressed. So we will be in touch on that issue, okay?
The house next door, the ditch is not as deep, and they fixed it again this year. You know, just two weeks ago, they fixed it. If you go there, you see a ditch.
Perfect.
In that place, we cannot cut.
I hear you. We're going to get, we're going to get to the bottom of it, and we appreciate it. Councilman Jolly, then Councilman Donavich.
Ma'am, you suggested that we name a future City Hall after Mayor Kirksey. It's a great idea. He's worthy. Unfortunately, we already got a building named after him. It's the Jack Kirksey Recreational Center, and that took place about nine years ago. And, you know, I was not on the council at that time. It was, I think, the last meeting before I became on council. But it was actually quite nice, and the council surprised him. He didn't know about it. And it was one of the last council meetings that he was mayor, that he was present as mayor at the meeting for. So, great idea, but somebody else might have had it a few years back. I think it might be confusing if we have more than one building named after anybody. So, but we'll think of somebody. On a different, on a different note, we do have our Spree President present here in the auditorium. I just want to call out all the volunteers and the large effort that was made by many residents, the Spree Board, Mr. Carey Magno is the president, and Kaylee Reed is the executive director, to get off a wonderful spree with no problems, a great fireworks show. And it's a longstanding effort that we all enjoy, but there is a lot of time and effort that goes into it that very few people truly understand, and Sam is the one who probably understands it the best. From just pure work and effort to problems and fires that have to be put out throughout the week. Just last night, 10 minutes before the fireworks started, Sam was running around making sure that we're people, you know, we're taken care of, and made an effort to make sure kids could get on rides when they thought they could get on rides. So thank you, Sam. Thank you to the board. Thank you, everybody. That's one of those traditions that we've got to make sure continues for the next 50 years and beyond. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanted to echo the comments from Mr. Jolly, Councilman Jolly. The spree was a lot of fun last night, and that's because a lot of people work hard, including Mr. Sam Carey Magno and Kaylee, and the board itself. But there's so many city employees and volunteers throughout the city that make it possible, from the police department and all the police officers and dispatchers, who are making sure we're staying safe. And the dispatchers are helping lost kids. I stopped by the tent yesterday, and I saw dispatchers helping some lost children. I saw police officers helping people. I saw countless volunteers picking up trash and handing out bottles of water. I mean, it really is a community effort. It's the DPW staff who make sure the roads are blocked off so that pedestrians can walk around, and making sure that things are fenced in such a way that we can kind of navigate around such a huge area. I mean, it really is a nice event, and it's awesome to see how many different city employees make it all possible, and Spree people make it possible. So thank you, Sam, and to your entire team, and Kaylee, and, you know, all the city employees and the city volunteers. And we'll see you guys again next year for some more fireworks. Thank you.
Mr.?
Councilwoman Don, or Councilwoman Toye?
Thank you. Just to chime in on the spree, after sitting on that board, it was appointed by our current president, it's amazing. I mean, I've served on this council a long time, been at the spree when they had snow cones with the Democratic Club and the Republican Club, and this one and that one. And I'm telling you, this thing has come a long way. And Sam, it's because of your efforts and Kaylee's, and all your team, and the police department, and the cadets, and everybody that my colleagues have pointed out to. It's amazing how it's evolved over the years, and you really have stepped it up. The layout was extremely well done this year, from what I understand, and pancakes were great. I've never seen so many people at that pancake breakfast as I saw this year. Hats off to you guys. You've done an immensely heavy lifting job, and it's all volunteers. And people take their vacations, and, I mean, it's amazing what they do for this thing. It's, and you meet year-round. That's why nobody wants to be on the committee. No, I'm teasing. But in all seriousness, Sam, thank you very, very much. And please thank everybody that's been involved. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I was going to kind of echo what my colleagues have said as well, and, you know, it was a great spree. And I just want to let you know, Sam, I was working on the beer tents on Friday, and I had a lot of residents from Livonia and surrounding communities just commenting that they felt it was like one of the best sprees in a really long time. And it just seemed to really go smoothly this year. The first responders were great. The food was great. I've never had an egg roll with corned beef in it before. That was amazing. But no, just I really, if you can echo all our sentiments to the rest of the volunteers and the board members that made this happen, it was fabulous. And next year, what, '75?
'75.
So that'll be a biggie.
Anything further from council?
Mr. President, I heard that next year Laura Toye will be letting off the fireworks, so...
She did it this year.
Mr. President?
Councilman Jolly?
Can we, I know it's a little out of order here. Can we have a, can we just have a report out from Mr. Carey Magno to keep it on track here?
Yeah.
If that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Well, hello. I want to thank you all for your, for your kind comments, and yes, it is a monumental effort that goes into this Livonia spree to get it done, and it's, I'm thankful for all of you, all of the committee members, board members, volunteers, city departments. It really is a joy to lead this thing, and it's going to be a joy again next year to do it. And it is maybe the 75th year of Livonia, and we're really looking forward to that. We've got a critique meeting coming up amongst our board and committee to talk about what we did well, what we think we can improve on, and I'm looking forward to that, because we just want to keep raising the bar and make it better each year and take no steps backwards. So thank you for your comments. I really appreciate it.
Sam, I got to, just to share a story, because, so I serve on the, I'm one of the council reps on the Spree Board currently. And it's one of the things that I'm always going to remember, and I want you to continue to do it. So every week, as it leads up to spree, we're meeting, you know, you guys are having side meetings, but usually the board is meeting once a week. And so there's usually, when it gets closer to the event, I think we had 35 people smashed into this little trailer. It was like 95 degrees out, and I think the trailer was about 120, but it was still, the AC was keeping up. And Sam has a phone, and it's not a rotary phone, but it's one of the older style phones, right, the dial? And it just would ring. He'd stop the meeting, "Livonia Spree, how may I help you?" And he'd be like, "Nope, we're going to be opening next week. We got everything. Get your ride tickets." And he would hang it up and start the meeting again. It probably happened five times in the meeting, and it's something, honestly, Sam, that I'm always going to remember. It goes along the line of when I said, "Call me when you get home," and Laura called me at 1:00 in the morning. These are great stories, and it's a vision of just, just going through, and, you know, it takes a village, and we have some great people that are in the city that do this. And again, I think we missed, me and Harper missed one day. We had to take a breather, but, I mean, the spree was energetic. It was almost like everybody was just bursting at the seams from, obviously, the fireworks, and then post-COVID, just to get out there and have a great time, and you guys knocked it out of the park. So congratulations.
Thank you. You're good.
I also do want to note that we do have new item on, oh, let me just finish this, and then I'm going to hand it over to you. Just saying, we have new data on item number 10, and now I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Morgan to tell us about the June retirees.
About the what?
The June retirees. Do you have that?
Yep. Sorry. Misunderstood you. Yep. Just real quick, I just wanted to mention that our June retirees from the city of Livonia, it's Vicki Locke, 35 years, eight months as a sewer supervisor. David Robertson, 35 years as the water supervisor. And Lynn York, 15 years, seven months as the violations clerk at the court. So appreciate you, and thank you very much for your service. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. Anything further from council? Seeing none, we will move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We do have communication from the Department of Finance dated June 6. This is a receive and file on departmental purchases ending May 2024. Moving on to the consent agenda, items 1 through 6 on the consentage item will be voted on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on June 17 and determined to be non-controversial. Council?
Mr. President?
Vice President?
I'd like to offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice President, second by Jolly. Do we have any comments from the audience on the consent agenda? Anything from council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries 7-0. We are now going to move on to unfinished business, which starts out with item number 7, which is a readout from our committee of a whole meeting that took place on June 24. This is the subject matter of the new senior center. I'll give a quick synopsis. The meeting is actually pretty quick, because I think we've studied it for a long time. A lot of staff have been working on it. It's exciting times to start seeing this project take fruition. So the meeting convened at 7:02 PM in the second floor. The item, I introduced the item very high level, and then the mayor was present and kind of gave an overview on the entire project, on how we got to the point of the GMP, which is the gross maximum price for the project. The mayor then handed the microphone off to Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis gave kind of more of a history and rundown on how we got to select PCI Daily, and took us through the project again, very high level, and opened it up to council for questions. And at that point, Councilman Jolly did give a motion to approval of the GMP, and we're here now. Mr. Davis, do you just want to give a quick overview on?
We need a motion on the floor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving at this time.
Support. So we have an approving from Jolly, support from Donavich. Mr. Davis, just high level, if you want to add some anything, probably not.
Really high level. We're here before council asking for an approval of the guaranteed maximum price. Total project, total construction guaranteed maximum price for this is $25,505,610.33. That breakdown was provided to council prior to our COW. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this project.
Councilman Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Davis. No questions. I'll just note that this is a project that's been long planned and is finally hitting the ground very much running. The work should start relatively soon. The rec center is planning for it and has all kinds of plans and details on the works in regards to what that's going to mean for rec center users. I just want to take a moment and say that this is of particular note for our community, because it's important to realize that we had a lot of federal funds, a lot of state funds, a lot of county funds that came in to finance this project. Although those were essentially taxpayer dollars as well, they were not dollars that came directly from the city of Livonia budget. We could have used those monies for anything we wanted to. Communities all around us are building things from whole new rec centers, to different park projects, to different, you know, capital outlays of different kinds. Livonia took a very important step in recognizing that we needed to honor our seniors and the sweat equity and the longevity that they've had in our community by doing them right with the rec center, well, rec center addition, that will be the new senior center, that is appropriate and modern, and will serve them as they should be served, and give them the amenities they need and the respect that they deserve in using those amenities. So I know there was some back and forth. People never like change, but we, you know, we all thought it was important to take this step, led by the mayor, this council, previous people on council as well, to really take that first step in honoring those people who have probably been here the longest and probably put in a lot to make the city successful, and hopefully they can use it, and, you know, we're expecting big things from it all across the board. So thank you.
Councilman Toye?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Davis, I want to commend you, because you've been an intricate part of this team of people from the administration long down, and that's so crucial as we explore this. And now, being a senior myself, I look forward to using this, so it better be good, right? And...
I was unaware you became a senior. Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah. The hair dyed it as well, let me tell you.
I wouldn't know anything about that, unfortunately.
Yes, sir. Correct, sir. Yes, sir.
You never will.
You never will. Yeah. But I just, I have to, you know, hats off to you, too, because, yeah, you're city employee, you get paid and all that good stuff, but come on, you've gone beyond a lot on this. And what I'm excited about is that we've interviewed a lot of those seniors, and we've gotten some direct input, obviously, before we started and as we started, to see where they were coming from. I know you were there, I was there with mayor over at, whatever that place is called, across from the police station, Phillips Place. And, I mean, I'm amazed at how many units are there and how many people showed up for that gathering, and that alone, and they have their own pool there and a nice facility, but they're super excited about this. And, you know, and then there's my colleague, Rob Donavich, who, you know, he's vice chair of this committee, and I'm telling you, he took it over because he's so young. I said, "You better get some good input into this," so that it's such a great place for me to attend, and my family and friends. And he did. He just knocked it out of the park. So thank you, guys. And obviously, our mayor and all the people that contributed those hard-earned dollars that we all paid into, but also that are, like Councilman Jolly said, are being used in such an insightful way. Thank you, thank you, thank you. There were a few hiccups, had a little problem with some of the expenditures we had, but you get over it, and you voice your opinion and move on. But in the spirit of Livonia, it's a great thing to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Davis, it's kind of surreal for us to all be here. I know government moves very slow, but in a way, we're moving very fast. And I want the public to understand, this is the start of the redevelopment of Five Mile and Farmington. I mean, this is the project catalyst. Nothing else that we are planning for the future 50, 100 years from now really can happen until this first hat falls, and that's building of the new senior center, which will allow the city to redevelop this corner. And it's so, the timing is perfect, because last night we had the spree, and there was thousands and thousands of people in that corner last night. Can you imagine five, 10 years from now, what this corner is going to look like during the 80th spree, the 85th spree? And it all starts here. And I understand there's some emotions, why are we building a senior center? Why aren't we doing this instead of this? I get that. And they're all, they're all important. They're all valid. Mr. Davis knows better than anybody. Everybody has kind of their own wants and needs, and they're all extremely important. And I feel for that. But you try to do as much as you can with the money we have and the space we have, and the committee made up of Parks and Rec staff, DPW staff, council members, the administration, senior staff, aging commissioners. I mean, it was, it was a large group of people with a lot of great input from their various departments. And I think ultimately, this was the best plan, albeit maybe not be perfect to some, but, I mean, it was, it was the best plan, I think. And we have to be cognizant of price. I know my colleague, Councilman Toye, mentioned that. I think at one point, this was higher than the number we're looking at now. At one point, it was lower. And I wish this number could be lower, but I think to get the good quality and the materials and just the reality of today's construction costs, it is going to be what it is. And like Mr. Jolly said, you know, we got a lot of dollars from the feds, the state, the county, and thank you to all those different governmental agencies that bought into our project. For the members of the public that may not know, those dollars and those partners from the state, the federal, the county, County Executive Warren Evans, our state senators, our members of Congress, they wanted to invest in a senior center. They didn't want to invest in a new football field or a new city hall. They were very intentional with their dollars. And we put those dollars to work, and we are where we are today. And I just want us to all think about it, you know, five years from now, we're going to be looking at a new city hall and a new police department, and looking at a plan of this entire city square, and it all starts here today. So thanks to all those people that made it possible. Thanks to all my colleagues on council, the mayor and department heads. Let's get, let's get some shovels on the ground, get to work. Thank you, sir.
Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of along the same lines, I mean, the seniors are the backbone of our community, so I'm glad that that's where we're starting with all of this. It is going to be a temporary inconvenience. There's no way to sugarcoat it. We're going to have some hiccups, I'm sure, at the rec center a little bit, but we're going to do the best we can. And I know Mr. Davis and his staff are going to do a great job of communicating out what's happening over there, but it is going to create a long-term benefit for our community. I mean, the revitalization of that area starts here, starts now, and hey, didn't we get shovels on the ground just a week ago? I remember putting mine in. But anyway, but we're excited, and, you know, this will be done well before any of us are seniors. Well, except me or maybe Toye, but she'll take us. She'll take us over there. But yeah, no, it's a very exciting project, and thank you, Mr. Davis, for everything you've done to get this show on the road. Thank you.
Councilwoman Buzinski?
Yeah. I just want to echo the sentiment of my colleagues and say, Ted, you've done a great job with this project and with Parks and Rec generally. July is Park and Recreation Month in our country, and we have truly one of the best parks and recreation departments in the state. It is my day job, so I can attest to this fully, that the amenities that we have in our community are second to none. I expect that the new senior center and the renovations to the rec center will just raise the bar for the amenities offered to residents here in this community and visitors. So thank you for your leadership on the project, Ted. And I also note, you know, when we're talking about the cost of the project, one of the nice things about this contract is that any savings that are found as, you know, the construction process moves forward, 100% comes directly back to the city. So that's, you know, again, great negotiations by the administration, by the folks leading this project to make sure that this is in the best interest of our residents. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any communication from the audience on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries 7-0. Mr. Davis, I don't know what you were just writing there, and you were kind of doodling I taking the vote tallies. I didn't know if you were writing secrets or not.
He was worried.
He was a little worried. I'm not sure. Mr. Davis, thank you, honestly. Kudos to staff. Let's get the party started. All right. We're going to move on to unfinished business, starting with item number 8, which is a block party request coming from Daniel Munoz, to be held on Saturday, July 20, 2024, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM on Auburndale between Jamison and Berkeley Avenues, with a rain date of Saturday, August 3. a rain date of Saturday, August 3rd. Yes, come on up. Name and address.
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion to approve for consideration.
We got an approval and support. Sir, tell us a little bit about the block party.
Well, we're going to have some music, barbecue. I applied for the neighborhood grant you guys have going on here, which worked out really well. We got approval for that, so we're going to be having the Carisal Acres come with a mobile petting zoo for the children. So, should be a good time. You guys are all more than welcome to stop by. We'll have plenty of food and beverages.
Awesome. Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's nice to hear that you used that block grant, the neighborhood grant. The guy down there with the beer, Not As Nice As Mine, Mr. Jolly, he came up with that idea a couple of years ago and it's always nice. I remember when he was talking about it, but that was before me, but then he's kind of mentioned over the years and it's nice to hear a resident has put that to work. So, nice job to Mr. Jolly and happy to hear residents are putting through the use.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. Anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the block party carries seven to zero. Have a great time.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks for the invite.
Yes, always. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Moving on to item number nine is a site plan petition that's coming from the Planning Commission. It's petition 2024-04-08-01, submitted by Hubble, Roth and Clark on behalf of the city of Livonia, requesting approval for all plans in connection with a proposal to construct a new Livonia Senior Wellness Center and make renovations to the Kirksky Recreation Center. Mr. Davis, oh, actually, council.
Mr. President, can I offer an approving?
We have an approving?
Support.
Support from Toy. Approving from Donavick, support from Toy. Mr. Davis, do you want to tell us a little about the site plan even though we've looked at it a thousand times?
I appreciate council taking up this new item that you've never seen before. So, thank you very much for that.
Just to give some context, for all the audience that's out there, we have studied this in committee meetings, committee of a whole meetings, planning has looked at it. And so, while we're not trying to discount and push things quick, we do want to get the shovels in the ground and we've discussed it and the team's done a great job behind the scenes. So, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Donavick at this point.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so the record reflects, so we can read this 30 years from now. Nice building. The building will be right next door to the rec center in its current capacity where it's at, on the right-hand side, the east side of the building. It's got its own dedicated entrance right off of Five Mile, so the seniors will be able to pull into their building. It is connected to the rec center. There's going to be a control access between the two points, so, you know, people don't just come and go unless they have the appropriate badging. It's great for our city staff at Parks and Rec, so they can help manage things. There's going to be a lot of great flexible space in the building. It's going to have a covered awning, entranceway, so the big buses that come in town and take our seniors out and activities, you know, there's so many great things. The parking lot is really close, so that our seniors have their own protected parking and they're not walking very far. The rec center will have some nice enhancements there as well for our residents. So, a lot of great things with the senior center, the nice multiple elevators, and the list goes on and on and on. But I just want to make sure kind of the record reflected that. And I'm sure Mr. Davis could add a few things on there too if he'd like, but some good stuff.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Small additions on the east side of the building, that's going to be the senior center lobby. So, the current space, that's the former gymnastics space, that becomes the main part of the two-level senior center. On the west side, we're getting adding a new gym to the rec center. Interior, the main gyms one and two become an expansion of the fit hub and multipurpose spaces. Biggest things, again, on the exterior and from the site plan perspective are the additions on the east and the west side, east side for the senior center, west side for the new gym, parking, dedicated parking lot, 120 spaces. Again, a horseshoe design, a covered entryway for the senior center, stormwater management, stormwater retention areas. Those are the biggest things that are being added to the site. We want to thank LPS as well for selling us the property. So, a portion of the former Bentley fields that are currently soccer fields, the city actually purchased that, so that's where a great deal of the expansion will occur for the parking lots and the stormwater management. I'm, again, happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anything further from council?
Uh-uh.
All right, seeing none. Anything from the audience?
Yeah.
Mr. King, perfect timing. Come on up.
Hey, I've just, I just was hoping you guys would revisit the retention ponds. St. Mary's is put in there as underground. And I went to Rob's meeting when he was giving information about this project. And where the retention ponds are going in the parking lot, there's some plumbing underneath, some main water lines and stuff. And so, that was the consideration why they didn't want to put them underground. But the rec center, current rec center has a retention pond and it's really, really not that attractive. And I think you're going to have two of them now and the maintenance on those ponds going forward 10, 15, 20 years are going to offset the cost of putting them underneath. Once you bury your retention ponds, you can locate them anywhere. So, I think that should be a policy moving forward in the city that wherever it's required, it's just like St. Mary's, they're going to put it underground. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anything further from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We're going to move on to item number 10, which is a request to renew a lease agreement between the city of Livonia and the Livonia Save Our Youth Task Force. This comes to us from the Department of Law for a period of three years, beginning August 1st, 2024, and expiring July 31st, 2027. Counsel. Vice President?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'll offer an approving motion.
Do we have support? Support from Mr. Morgan? Vice President?
Thank you. There was a little confusion at the last meeting, which is why I asked for this to be on the regular instead of the consent. There was a clerical error with the rental rates. Law Department has confirmed the error and corrected it for us, so I think we're ready to move on.
Perfect. Do we have anything further from council on this item? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero. We're going to move on to new business with, starting with item number 11, which is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance in Barricade Street. This comes to us from Joanne Hollenbeck. This is to host a graduation party on Saturday, July 13th, 2024, from 1:30 to 10 o'clock on Woodring Street between West Chicago and Vermont Streets. Counsel?
Mr. President, I'll offer an approving for consideration.
We have an approving. Do we have support?
Support.
Support from Vice President. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for joining us. It sounds like we got a party coming up and we want to, you wanted to hang out with us and that's okay.
Yeah.
Tell us a little about the party.
Well, the party's for my granddaughter and we're having a catering truck that's going to do cooking. And so, we just thought that if the street was closed, it'd be much safer for people going to get food and for the people cooking the food.
Awesome. Well, that sounds like a blast. Counsel, do we have any remarks?
Mr. President?
Oh, Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick question. Are your neighbors aware of the party?
Yes, they are.
Are they invited or at least happy about it?
They're all invited.
Okay.
And I even told them they would, the ones where their driveways come out onto Woodring, that if they want to leave to go anywhere, park your car in front of your house.
Just wanted to make sure everyone's on board. Thanks.
Yes, they don't have a problem with it.
Great. Awesome. Anything further from council? Anything else from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And you got a seven to zero. Thanks for hanging out with us.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Have a great graduation, all right?
You're invited to the weigh-in.
Well, just accept Mr. Donavick. That's fine. No, I didn't.
Where you're camping, go.
Moving on to item number 12, it's a request to approve a contract assignment. This comes to us from the Department of Law to reflect the new owner of the waste contract. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Mr. Jolly?
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Oh, go ahead. We got Jolly and Donavick on the support. Do we have anybody to speak on this?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, I think it might be appropriate to have somebody from the DPW or Mr. Kar Magno come up to the podium to give us some concept here. Just from the newspapers and understanding where we are as a community, our current trash hauling provider for residential services is GFL and they have made the decision to sell their residential services to Priority. And this would just be a contractual acknowledgement that our partner in that contract would now be Priority and not GFL. I'll just, I'll say, for the last many decades, the company that we have been using has changed names and legal entities depending on what the particular contract period or service period was. But one constant has remained is Sam Kar Magno has been the person who has been facilitating that on the private side for the city of Livonia and many other communities around here as well. So, Sam is kind of, as these things have happened, he has gone along with the contracts on the other side and made sure that the services were something that was consistent and acceptable and many times above and beyond what we were expecting. So, I have no hesitation to do this in this instance as well because we've gone through this before. And maybe not exactly the same way, but we have had similar changes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Before I say, Mr. Kar Magno, if you, I mean, maybe just a high level, I know the city's probably going to come out with a, you know, frequently asked questions type things, but like, maybe just give a quick overview. I mean, we don't see any services changing, that kind of stuff. Take it away.
Yeah, I will. Thank you. Thank you for hearing us tonight. Yes, GFL's made the decision to sell their municipal business in southern Michigan, everything from south of Flint, which encompasses 74 residential communities, Livonia being one of the largest. GFL's made a decision to get out of that business and has sold this company or their part of the business to Priority Waste, which is a locally-based Clinton township, a privately-owned firm who has more than adequate capability to service the city of Livonia. As Councilman Jolly said, I've been with you for a long time, providing the service. The hat is going to go from a green hat to a yellow hat. You're going to continue with the service that you have. No day changes, no service changes. And that's, we're happy to offer that. We've got some enhancements. We have electronic tracking on the trucks. We're going to have camera positioning on all of the trucks as well to be able to watch the trucks go down the road. So, we've got some technical enhancements along with our institutional knowledge of solid waste collection, recycling and yard waste. So, we're happy for that. You'll be happy to know that Priority essentially took over the work today in many communities and long before I got here tonight, your yard waste was collected and your trash was collected and your recycling was collected. So, as, business as usual for us.
Thank you. Councilman Jolly?
Yeah, one more thing. I just, I had an opportunity to speak to Sam in regards to this change very briefly the other day, but he gave an explanation in terms of how technology was going to assist in the efforts to provide this service going forward as well that I thought was quite fascinating, actually. And I'm probably going to butcher this, but he indicated that the trucks would be in the near future that we're servicing Livonia, getting cameras on them, and that those cameras would be monitored from a central operations center in real time. One of the things that people always ask is like, what's it like being on city council? And my first response is, you should see our email, right? And we do get occasional emails where someone says, you know, the trash was missed or this happened and this and that. And this is a great effort to, you know, kind of cut those small issues when they do pop up off before they even happen. And he also outlined expectations in terms of, you know, safety uniforms and other things that are just really amazing. So, I think this is going to be a good move.
Thank you. Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Kar Magno, for that kind of explanation. Just for the public's sake, we're very fortunate to have Mr. Kar Magno kind of leading up in our region because he's a Livonia resident. And as Councilman Jolly alluded to, we get a lot of emails and/or phone calls for something that may or may not have happened. And it's nice to be able to call somebody as opposed to some number, a 1-800 number, to someone that doesn't really know Livonia, doesn't know exactly what road that is. And even further, his son works right here in Livonia and he's out there on the road at 5:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night, you know, making sure the trash is picked up, making sure yard waste is picked up. So, that's meaningful to me. That's a return on investment. And of course, sometimes we're going to miss things. It's human error. That's just like anything in the world, but it is nice to know that someone locally cares about our program, is on top of it. It is interesting timing because maybe if it's appropriate to Mr. Roraf, you know, we're looking for a new trash contract to begin with. And, you know, I don't know if we're up at that point yet or not, but maybe kind of give us a little bit of info, insight and what that transition's going to look like into the future for us.
Good evening, counsel. Don Roraf, DPW. I never like following sound. Just put that on the record. Thank you. Yes. So, as you know, the city went out for RFPs just prior to the acquisition or the purchasing of GFL by Priority Waste. So, we received two RFPs back. As life would have it, it would have been GFL and Priority. So, dealing with the law department, dealing with Sam, dealing with a lot of things at the moment, trying to touch a bunch of variables at the same time, we are still in the process of working through the RFP process and working through some questions and some different ideas that we may have. So, this current contract that we have obviously goes through the end of November. So, our RFP process, regardless of this acquisition or anything that was happening, would not have went live until December 2nd. So, anything that happens and anything that's going on right now has nothing to do with the RFP. It just has to do with the transition from GFL to Priority at this point. But we would, I would think we would be within the next few weeks of coming back to council with a recommendation. We just have a few more meetings. I think we have to, you know, kind of hammer out some questions and some different things that we may have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Sam. Have a good one. That concludes the regular agenda. We will now go back for audience communication for items that are not on the agenda. Mr. King?
Yeah.
We would have given you kudos before the clock starts.
Okay.
But, you know, obviously, you were rocking and rolling at the spree as well. We missed your kudos on that, so.
I appreciate that. That's kind of what I wanted to address. Spree went very, very smooth, fantastic. And if you look around neighboring communities that had to cut their fare short or cancel them altogether, spree, I've been involved for many, many years. It was very smooth. And I want to give a shout out to Kaylee because she's who I interact with and she's just been fantastic. Also, wanted to, the weather, of course, of course, was a big, big factor. And the pancake breakfast, by the way, Laura, 1,000 people, 1,000 tickets sold. And I don't know if I should tell you, Thursday, $48,000 worth of beer sold in the beer tent, but, yeah. But I love being on the Ball Diamond. I wanted to thank the Spree Committee for letting me come back after being rained out last year. We're on the Ball Diamond. The beer drinkers are in the tent. The families are on the Ball Diamond. The kids dancing. So, I hope I can come back.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anything further from audience communication? Seeing none. I'm going to go back to council.
Motion adjourned.
And I was going to leave you with the send-off.
I'll second that.
I'm going to show 7:49. We will start the study at 8. Good evening, Livonia.